Welcome to the Health and Fitness Center in the Trustees' Monthly Meeting. Happy to see a near-full house here. Vanessa, please call the roll.
Chair Milken.
Here.
Vice Chair Davis.
Here.
President DeVarty. Secretary Hatcher.
trustee Fleming.
Here.
trustee Lando.
Here.
trustee McNamara.
Here.
Thank you. I would like to entertain a motion to recess this newly convened monthly meeting and move into closed session to discuss a collective bargaining agreement.
Let's approve the agenda. Did we approve the agenda?
Ah. Disregard that proposal. We have an agenda in front of us for tonight's meeting. Do I have a motion for approval of the agenda?
Support.
And we have support. Vanessa, please call the roll.
Chair Milken.
Yes.
Vice Chair Davis.
Yes.
President DeVarty.
DeVarty, here.
trustee Fleming.
Yes.
trustee Lando.
Yep.
trustee McNamara.
Yes.
Good, we're in agreement on that. Thank you. I would now like to entertain a motion to recess the monthly meeting and move into closed session to discuss a collective bargaining agreement. Is there support?
Support.
Vanessa, please call the roll.
Chair Milken.
Yes.
Vice Chair Davis.
Yes.
President DeVarty.
DeVarty, yes.
trustee Fleming.
Yes.
trustee Lando. trustee McNamara.
Yes.
Thank you. The monthly meeting is now recessed. The Board of Trustees. I would like to entertain a motion. The recommendation is that the Board of Trustees approve the minutes of the June 28, 2022 monthly meeting as submitted. I hear a motion for the approval of the agenda.
So moved.
Support.
And we have support. All in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed? Mr. Approve. Thank you. Citizen participation. The WCC Education Association. Ms. Kissel is in the room. Please come forward.
Hello. It is July 2022. So on July 8, WCC EA membership voted 98% in favor of the new contract. I cannot thank the negotiation team, the election chair, the membership chair, and the WCC EA board enough for their support and efforts during this process. So we are looking forward to the Board of Trustees' approval this evening. So regarding grievances, we've been given a tentative date of November 21, 2022 for the arbitration-related office space. When we begin fall term, the WCC EA will be open to discussions about this grievance as we wait for that date. For the second grievance in the queue, the WCC EA has until September 20 to file for arbitration. And based on preliminary discussions with the impacted member and the WCC board, arbitration will be recommended. Should this occur, it would mark the first time in many years that we have two arbitrations filed at the same time. So as President Blanca and I will be planning a meeting soon, certainly we can review these things. So this week is also one of my favorites during the year since I'm once again teaching the ironworkers. There is such excitement in the return to campus, and like all of the trade partnerships, the members so appreciate the campus amenities and attention to detail. For all of my WCC colleagues working behind the scenes to make these training programs a success, I applaud your efforts and energy. So for many of us, we are looking for some time, even if brief, to disconnect from our work lives and relax and reconnect with those important people in our lives. However, this continues to elude many of us. As we've learned, there's been a rash of bomb threats on college campuses recently. And the bomb threat and building evacuations on July 8 on our campus continue to add stress to our already-stress-filled lives. As I've discussed with President Blanca, most of the concerns center around how information about the threat was shared on that Friday and in the days that followed. In fact, many only saw the Facebook post early on Friday evening after the campus had received the all-clear. The balance, as stated in an Inside Higher Ed article by those experiencing similar threats, is to strike a balance between not overreaching but not failing to react. I do know that counselors have reached out to any students who had been impacted by the threat, and I want to remind the membership that the Employee Assistance Program is always available. With more and more people returning to campus, now is the time to plan and train to prepare for any situation that we may face in the future. And the WCC EA looks to the further conversation about campus safety and concerns and how best to address the needs of the many stakeholders. Thank you.
Thank you. I've been advised that Bethany Kennedy is in the room for public comment. Ms. Kennedy, would you come forward, please? We have three minutes to listen to your comments. Please proceed.
My name is Bethany Kennedy. I am a Washtenaw County resident and WCC employee. Thank you all for the opportunity to comment on my experience from Friday afternoon, July 8. At approximately 4:00 PM on Friday, July 8, Washtenaw County Sheriff's Officers entered the Richard W. Bailey Library armed with assault rifles and wearing body armor. Uvalde, Highland Park, Buffalo, Oxford. This is the first thing that entered my mind. My 15-plus years of public service and emergency procedure training took over as we attempted to evacuate students and staff from the library in the Gunner Myron Building with no alarms to alert our staff or students. I hugged my coworker and sent her out towards the emergency exit. I witnessed her shepherding students towards the exit with her, not knowing if I was going to see her again, if they were heading away from danger or into it. I made a phone call that I hope none of you ever, ever have to make to the ones that you care about most. I love you. I'm not sure what's going on, not knowing if this will be your last words to them. Now, this all seems very dramatic now, doesn't it? We know now that it was apparently a non-credible threat. On Friday, July 8, thankfully, we did not need the Washtenaw County Sheriff's Officers in body armor and assault rifles. No students or staff needed the ambulance or fire trucks that I saw headed to campus. But we did need to trust that our college had a plan for our safety. We did need communication. I spent the rest of the evening scanning news sites, the WCC website, texting other staff, trying to find information, desperately worried that my coworkers or our students had been injured or worse. There was only a social media message two hours later. WCC has alarm systems, public announcement systems, security camera systems, emergency alert communications, and an on-campus police force, and none of those systems were engaged or present. Our campus has been given an opportunity that others have not. We can use this opportunity to work together to improve response and safety for our entire campus community. The emergency information currently available on the WCC website pertains to frontline staff action and training. The plan available through the WCC staff portal contains many key staff who are no longer here and was not followed. Where is the updated emergency response plan for the college? Where's the annex plan, the fan-out list? How do we know that students and staff are accounted for after an emergency? How often are these plans reviewed? When and where will students, staff, and community have access to this information? Who has contacted and provided resources for the students and staff that experienced the events of July 8? I do not have the answers to these questions. The community and parents sending their children to WCC do not have the answers to these questions, but you should. Thank you again for your time and attention.
Thank you. Vanessa, were there any written communications that we received?
Yes, there was one.
We move now to special reports. The Lucian Update, CIO Kruger. He'll present this to us.
Thank you very much for the opportunity to come and speak to a little bit about what we've accomplished this past year. There's a lot to talk about, but I'm only going to touch on the highlights or we'd be here for a long time. So we're going to jump right into it, talk about these topics: student success, cybersecurity and network infrastructure, help desk user services, and a few other highlights. So let's jump right into it and talk about student success. Now, one of the themes you're going to hear from me today is collaboration. With all these projects, we are collaborating, partnering with the appropriate campus stakeholders to ensure that we deliver something that actually meets the needs. And this is one example of that. This is a survey on the ClassSearch webpage, partnered with the right senior leaders to understand what they needed done. And this survey allows students to tell us what class they're looking for, okay, what term they want to take it, and what delivery method they're looking for. That information is then provided to the appropriate senior leadership, and they can then make sure that they get a schedule that meets the needs of the students. I think this is just fantastic. It's a way to understand what those needs are and address them. Okay, the Intelligent Learning Platform, or ILP for short, that is a program that streamlines grade entry and the enrolling and un-enrolling of students. So basically what happens, as you can see in the picture, students are enrolled in Banner Student Information System, and that data is then synced with Blackboard. And then grades are entered in Blackboard, and that data is then synced with the Banner Student Information System. And what that does is eliminates data entry errors, eliminates duplicate data entry, and just streamlines the entire process. This was another project that here I am talking about this for just a few seconds, you know, maybe a minute. This took months in the planning, months to work with various different constituents at Washtenaw. And really, it was a great collaborative effort. And Nancy Collessen, for example, in the Center for Interactive Teaching and Learning, created videos for the faculty. So they understood how to use the tool, and because of that, I think it's been a very successful tool to date. So it was a fantastic project. We implemented EVision's Argos reporting tool. And what this does is it helps us leverage data to improve recruiting, retention, and student success. It also provides the data to enable decision-making to meet the best needs of the college. What you see on the right is a sample chart that you've actually seen before when the annual and fall student profiles were presented. That's just one chart, and if you remember those profiles, all of that was created in Argos. So it can create any number of charts, reports, et cetera, basically with the push of a button. So, very good. But one of the best parts about that is something you don't see, and Linda Blakey commented on it. She said, "Confidence in the consistency of the data definitions was a huge part of this project." Now, what data definitions means is it defines what something is. For instance, what is a student? Because what I found in my career is, yes, 10 people, how many students you have, and you'll get 15 different answers. Because some people look at how many enrolled, how many dropped out. You know, there's a lot of different ways to slice and dice that. So because we have consistent data definitions, that data means something. It means the same thing. So that was a huge win for that project. Not only can we generate reports, and we've got a lot more reports we still have to do, but they mean something. So we're not done doing these things, but that was a huge win. Classrooms and labs. So we updated 43 computer labs and upgraded the hardware in 13 of those labs. And so you may be asking, wait a minute, you do 43 or 13? So every lab got a refresh on the software, on the drivers, everything to make them work well, and 13 of them got new equipment. We prepared 110 classrooms for fall and winter, and we upgraded the hardware in 26 of them. So here again, we made sure we had the right software. And this is a picture of just one of those labs. This is OE 146. Connected Car Hacking Lab. This is one of my favorite pictures. I love this picture. This is exciting, cool tech that we have on campus, and I hope a lot more people learn about this. So what we did here is we just basically moved the Connected Car Hacking Lab. But this was, again, another very collaborative project with Alan Day, a faculty member. We worked with him and others to make sure we understood what their needs were, what they were trying to accomplish. And at the end, you've got many of these stations that are really, you know, cutting edge. And what Alan Day said is, "Thank you, everyone who is working on the CSS 285 course and lab this semester. The response has been nothing short of amazing. I am grateful for your work and support." To me, this is what it's all about. And we've got a lot of examples. I just have, you know, one more here of feedback of, you know, collaboration, whether it's, you know, the library, you know, transportation, whatever it is. We're trying to meet with people and understand their needs, and not just, here, eat this, but this is what you need. So Rocky Roberts, also of Transportation, said, "We have been nothing but impressed with how connected your department is with our needs and how intuitive your staff is with troubleshooting some of the technology challenges we face." Thank you so much. Okay, data center tour for students. So one of the faculty members, whom we'll get to in a minute, reached out and wanted the students to be able to take a tour. Now, I should have taken a picture when those students were here. I did not, so this is IT personnel. However, however, I can assure you, these IT people know what Tyson there is pointing at, but I wanted something somewhat realistic-looking. But, no, what this does is it opens the student's eyes to real life. What really happens? What's it really looked like? And without getting into the details, there's something fairly innovative about this space, which I won't dive into now, but it's kind of a hot aisle, cold aisle, you know, containment system. And we were able to show them that technology. In other words, you want to isolate the cold from the hot and do some of those type of things. But the student engagement, they were right on it. They were engaged, asked great questions. They'd have been there all night if we'd have let them. I mean, it was fantastic. And it just showed me that they've been taught well. Some of the things, the questions they asked were very, very well done. So it was good for them, I think, and it was good for us. So James Lewis, he's the first faculty that reached out to us for a tour, then others jumped on, and we have another tour scheduled for next week. So he said, "The information and presentations are very much appreciated, and the students will benefit from these experiences for years to come." Okay, so now we're going to jump into another fun topic: cybersecurity. What we're going to talk about here is everything we're doing to prevent what you see on the screen. We don't want Washtenaw's name anywhere near anything like this. So there's a lot of things that I'm going to talk about. I'm not going to talk about everything we're doing, but talk about a lot of things. And you need to understand that those aren't just things we've done and we've done. Those are ongoing, right? Security is right in our crosshairs. It's something that's very, very important to us. So let's jump into it here. Multi-factor authentication. So what that basically means is, when you log into my WCC Blackboard or Banner, you have to have two forms of authentication. What that means is, let's say someone were to steal my password. So they know my login name, they steal my password. They log in. They can log in. They're going to get this image that you see up top, and they're going to get that. And then they're going to say, what do I do? Right? If you press the top button, it's going to send me a message, and I'm going to, on my phone, or the little fob you see at the bottom, I'm going to say, is this is me? No, this isn't me. And they won't get in. So this is a big deal. And when you watch, you know, the news and hear people talk about the two most important things that you can, a lot of important things, but the two most important things that you can do to prevent major issues are multi-factor authentication, and guess what the next topic is? System patching. So what system patching is, is you have software applications. These software applications sometimes have problems, right? Sometimes they have, they may not work right, or often they have security holes. And what a security hole does is allow someone to be able to go in and do something bad to your organization, right? So patches, when they come out, they come out, and we apply those patches. We put them on the computers, on the servers, so that they can't exploit those and do ransomware and all these other bad things, right? So for the most part, on our servers, the standard practice is to wait a little bit to make sure that that patch, if it's not a critical patch, that that patch doesn't break something else, okay? But what we've decided to do here is there are some patches that are critical, meaning they are a big risk. So we don't wait. We take the risk of maybe breaking something, but before we take that risk, we take what was called a snapshot or a backup of that. So in the event we learn a day or two later that something goes south, we could always roll back to that. But that's, those are decisions that Chief Information Security Officer or me can make when we see those critical things. So again, front, center, crosshairs, this is what we talk about. This is what we do all the time. There's rating systems for all these. I mean, when we get, you're made aware of, there's different ratings rankings of which, I think it's eight, nine, and 10 of the critical ones, but there's, you know, they're all rated.
Are they patch?
So we removed operating systems and applications that are no longer supported. And why is that important? Because if they're no longer supported, the manufacturer's not making patches. So patches is kind of a theme here, and we can't patch them, fix them, so consequently we remove them. And Windows 7, Red Hat Enterprise Windows 5, and Office 2010 were three of them that we removed. Okay, internal vulnerability scanning. This is where we scan the systems to make sure that there's no missing patches, no vulnerabilities, and that they're configured properly. Now, we do that at a regular cadence once a month. However, if there is a dangerous vulnerability in the wild, and there's been several, we scan for those every day for 60 days. We've done that several times, and just to make sure that nothing else crops up that we find it. Again, we take this stuff very seriously, so we do that internally. Now, what else do we do? Well, the bad actors are not scanning internal, they're scanning from outside. So bad people that want to do bad things to our stuff, they are scanning our environment, much like we do, but from the outside. So we have this agency, the Cybersecurity Infrastructure Security Agency. We have them from the outside scan our systems as well, and they scan it on a regular basis, and they have not found any critical or high vulnerabilities. But if we find something, or if they find something, we're going to patch it right away. So we all understand what a risk this is, and so patching, as you can see, is a huge target. So what else are we doing? CrowdStrike antivirus. I realize I shouldn't have abbreviated AV there, but CrowdStrike antivirus for our servers, that's a next-gen best practice, really is rated as probably the best antivirus out there, and so we've recently installed that. And that allows, you know, well, it's proactive. It does threat hunting based on algorithms, you know, et cetera. So it's trying to prevent any sort of virus on our servers. You'll see here we have 240 servers. There's two offline. They're offline because they've been turned off and they've been replaced. So we have these dashboards that we can rely on. Malwarebytes protective measures. This is for desktop computers. And so the numbers you see on the left are of, over a 90-day period, and I'm, we quarantined 76 instances of malware, we blocked over 4,000 website connections, and we blocked another 1,000 dangerous applications. So here again, that's something that happens in malware, and we've got an add-on to malwarebytes that allows us, if someone does get ransomwared, we can roll back their files. So that's an add-on that we have for malware to, again, protect. Network infrastructure. This next picture was taken quite a while back, but it's one of my favorite pictures. This is a picture of where our server was, and then our server fell on the ground. And rest assured, it's no longer on the ground. But this is something, we have put it in a nice, safe, secure rack not far from here. But that's not the only thing that we've done with our network. So we have replaced fiber and ethernet cables, and we've replaced the wireless controller and access points. Now, what you'll see here is two examples of a network closet. Both of these are in ML. They're actually different rooms because we had to move where we kept the network closet. But the one on the left is before, is what it shouldn't look like, and the one on the right is what it should look like. And you're going to say, okay, Todd, the only difference is the one's prettier than the other. Well, yes, that's true, but when you see dangling cables, equipment hanging from them, what that happens is you put extra pressure on the wires, right? And so you could have problems. You also can have difficulty when you get in there, everything tangled, you can pull something out, something else comes out, something gets loose. So, you know, I'm not going to begin to suggest that every rack on campus looks like the one on the right, because it doesn't, but we're going far away from what's on the left. So we're moving in the right direction.
When did the one on the right come into operation?
So that one on the right is actually in operation in ML right now. That's functioning right now. But I guess what I, maybe I wasn't clear. We are trying to make more of them on campus look more like the one on the right, but we're not there yet, okay? We were doing a lot of updating, but getting it that clean is, but yeah, the one in ML, the network, the access points, everything there is working just fine. And we'll get into it in a little bit, what all we've done in ML. So there was a lot of stuff to be, yes, Dave.
So this picture here, the before became the after, or are these two different?
Yeah, those are two different rooms. So the before is ML 126A, and the after is ML 119.
But it's the same system, just more?
Well, it's replacement system. It's new equipment. Everything's new.
But they're basically the same?
Yes.
Right, they're connecting the same things?
Yeah, yeah. Although the network, the robustness of the network, the amount of connections, the amount of Wi-Fi, all those things is much better based on the collaborative approach we took to understanding what the needs were. Plus, when you all asked us to build a building, you asked, and we'll get into this later, you asked for appropriately robust, but you also asked for both now and future-proofing to a degree. So that's what this is, we hope. Thank you. Trustee DeVarty. Anything else? Awesome. The phone system upgrade. So we did two main things with the phone system. We switched vendors. So our new vendor is all on fiber versus a lot of copper. And the other thing we did is we separated the phone traffic. Without getting into a lot of details, we put it on a different network. It's much like if you have every car in town going on one freeway, there's a lot of traffic, a lot of wrecks, a lot of things happen. But if you segment different things, keep them on different distinct highways, you're going to have a lot less wrecks. And there's people in this room that I could ask that would vouch for the fact that there's a lot less noise, a lot less problems on, with the phones, based on what we've done. And we've still got more to do, but it's a lot better. We're not going to get into the picture on the right. Suffice it to say, there's a lot going on with our phone system, and we're making it better. Okay, the help desk. So we continued providing 24-by-7-by-365 support, which is a big deal. The central help desk handled over 7,500 tickets. Locally, we closed over 3,900 tickets, and the quality rating average was 4.78 out of 5, which is very good. Now, what we do when we get a survey is, anytime we get a low rating, we reach out to them and say, okay, what did we do? What did we, what can we do better? So on and so forth. Once in a while, those surveys are really concerning. Sometimes, you know, I had one person give us a real bad rating because it took 10 minutes to get something fixed. And I'm really sorry. But for the most part, we listen, we hear, and see what we can do to get things fixed as quickly as we possibly can. And that's been very valuable. It's been very valuable. These reports also are very valuable with understanding what's going on and, you know, making sure we provide great service. Other, yes?
The difference between tickets handled and tickets closed? That's what, 3,600?
Yeah, so the central help desk, they handle all these tickets. They don't close them all. They close some of them, but they, they're the intake mechanism. They're like the top of the funnel, so to speak. They're taking them, and they'll close what they can, and then make sure they get their other tickets to the right place. So then, a lot of other tickets are handled by the help desk or by other areas locally.
So these other tickets, will those not be taken care of?
Oh, I'm sorry, yes, yeah, absolutely, they're taken care of. Yeah, I could certainly provide more detail, but we have, you know, a lot of different groups solve tickets. It's not just IT either. We have calls that go to different areas as well. But yeah, everything is followed up on, reviewed, tracked regularly, just to make sure that, that's why we have a ticket system, because if people's emailing someone, no one sees it in the email. But if it's in the ticket system, we can all see. And what our goal is, is we're trying to respond within one business day, obviously if it's something on fire, much, much, much sooner. And we do that the mass majority of the time.
And then this quality rating average, is that only on the tickets closed at the help desk?
No.
Does that include all the tickets?
That number there, we've got several different numbers. I have to remember, but I believe that number there is on tickets closed locally. I think that's what that number is.
At the help?
Locally at WCC. I could double-check that if you want, but...
I'm just curious what we're measuring. We've got this great rating.
Yeah.
But I'm wondering if there's some stuff that's not so great that we're not seeing rating. rating.
So, I would tell you if there was, and from a survey rating standpoint, we keep getting better for the most part, because we're doing better at communicating, follow-up, follow-through, that type of thing. We're really staying on top of that better than before. So, from, you know, I'm kind of a customer service fanatic, and I am overall very pleased with what we're doing. Now, do things fall through the cracks? Yes. Do things get missed on occasion? Yes. But overall, the customer service, that's a great rating.
Right. Thank you.
Fantastic. Okay, other highlights. ML Conference Center Technology renovation. As I kind of alluded to earlier, we were tasked with coming up with a technology plan that was appropriately robust and befitting a leading-edge conference center. I remember, trustee DeBarty, you had a lot of comments on what you wanted that to be. And I remember those from the first meeting. I heard you talk about it. And that coupled with someone then asked, wanted me to need now and into the future. So, I think we've done that, okay? And first thing is wiring. We installed over 30 miles of network cable in that building. Now, again, the network, the wifi, everything is much, much, much more robust than before, okay? And that also befits another goal that we had is flexibility, right? We wanted to be able to reconfigure the space without running duct tape all over the place or gaffers tape. And because of that, we had to put the wire in different places so we could do that. So, there was a lot that went into this, a lot of planning, but over 30 miles. Okay, now, we have, on the AV side, we have hundreds of AV pieces of equipment to make it all work. And to control all that, we have over 4,000 lines of code to control all that. Now, some of those pieces of equipment, we have 43 speakers, we have 18 cameras, 17 projectors, and you'll see the screens that you'll see there, those are three screens in the flex space that they're getting their image from, three of those projectors. And we had five flat panel displays. Three of those are touchscreens, and you'll see the bottom right, that's a touchscreen. And how can we forget one circular screen? And that's in the bottom left. And you haven't seen that yet. It turned out better than I thought it would. It really, really did turn out very good. Okay, so...
I guess I have one follow-up question on that. I was anticipating, and the reason I wanted this was because, I'm not sure, does the UA makes use of this facility for their training, right? Have we had any feedback? Or I guess they haven't used it yet, but have we had any feedback from users or potential users about the new upgrades?
May I, on?
Yeah.
May I ask Brandon Tucker, who's working with ironworkers right now? Have you received any feedback from ironworkers?
They are extremely impressed with the program. They have their finished office in the middle and do a number of business meetings there. And that was actually mentioned at their opening ceremony, almost 600 people Sunday. Maybe that's a week setting up.
Thank you.
And we've already had discussions with the UA on how they would like to use some of these displays as well. So, those discussions, they're not here yet, obviously, but we've already had those discussions.
Thank you.
Okay, so, more than 1.4 million of cost savings avoidance. So, the majority of that cost savings avoidance came from negotiating deeper discounts than before on computers and on network equipment. With the supply chain issues, you know, et cetera, we didn't, couldn't get as deep of discounts as we had in the past, but we still are quite pleased with what we were able to get. So, that was big. And then the other thing that we did, I talked earlier on the ILP, the Interactive, I'm sorry, the Intelligent Learning Platform. And when that was quoted, it was quoted for that tool, and then there was an estimate of how much professional services hours would be used and a rate for that. So, rather than using those hours and paying for that, we were able to use hours that we have as part of Illution Managed Services that we have under the contract, we use those hours to get that done. So, we saved over $30,000. So, what you all need to know is that I treat this as, what would I want done? What's the best thing to do for WashDont? And that was something that was the best thing to do for WashDont, so we did it. If we wouldn't have had the resources, we'd have had to go a different direction, but yeah, $30,000 may not be a lot of money, but it's something that we try and be very, very ethically responsible. Technology Sustainability Plan, we talked about this just a couple of months ago, so I'm not going to get into a lot of details on this. But suffice it to say, this allows us to see a mechanism for seeing what we've done, what we're doing now, and what we're doing going forward. And we can dive into the details of who's doing what task and really understand those projects. So, this has been a huge win for us so far and kind of changed our trajectory in getting some things done. Active projects. Now, I'm not going to touch on every one of these unless you would like me to, but a couple of examples. The Anaplan Budget Development Software, we've been working with Terry Barnes and his team on getting that implemented, integrated. Also working with his team on the self-serve budget and expense transfers. And we're getting the network upgraded in the GL edition. Those are just a few things that we're doing. I did touch on security here, just to say that security, everything we talked about before and more, we are doing now, tomorrow, and forever. That's something that we're going to be always vigilant about. Anything else? Any questions?
Questions, anybody? See, DeBarty. I've been asking questions, which I apologize. But so on this active projects, the Morris Lawrence Technology Commissioning and Training. So, are we training, is that training staff to be able to use that new, those newly installed technologies appropriately as possible?
Yes, exactly.
And then how, I'm just wondering, how many of our staff will be going through this training?
So, to start with, we're going to start with mainly the people that use the technology on a regular basis, the conference center staff and those affiliated. But as we go forward, what the goal is with this technology is to make it so it's usable, so it's intuitive, so there's a user interface. So, what the plan is, train the right people, train the trainer, and then when people come in to use it, the conference center staff will know the basics of how to use it. Anything super fancy, media services will get involved. But from the standpoint, it's meant to be intuitive, and from my experience, it will be. People will want someone there to show them, and then they'll get there, and they'll do it all by themselves, because it's very self-explanatory. So, it's train the trainer, rather than sending everyone through some advanced training months before they use it, when they schedule their first event, show them how to use it, and then it, for the most part, it works, it should work really well.
And another kind of a side question, and I've always been impressed by the strength of our music education, music programming. Has there been, and since a lot of that takes place in the Morris Lawrence Building, has the technology, have the technology upgrades been able to have a positive impact on the music?
On the music?
Education.
The music education specifically?
Right. Or are you aware?
I'm not. So, there are some things we did to enhance the lighting and the speakers in the Towesley Auditorium, but we didn't do a ton in there, but the lighting and speakers will definitely be better, you know, better projection as well. But as far as focusing specifically, we met with all the stakeholders again on what all those needs were. We didn't drill into music, but overall, the technology in general, with the speaker quality and everything like that, everything's going to be much better. Did that answer your question?
Yeah, I think I potentially have some follow-up questions specifically in that.
Okay.
Any further questions, trustees, anybody? Thank you. Great report.
Can I say something?
Please do.
Thank you very much.
I would like to commend you.
Thank you.
Your Donna Jobs outstanding CIO.
Thank you.
And your team is amazing. The customer service, I've never seen customer service that attentive or really working with. If everyone, my level of knowledge is, okay, this is low, this is high, I'm like, here, okay, they can work with me, and they do patiently. They can work with everyone. So, thank you for making it a priority. You do care about the students, and that's what I admire the most.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
And I want to thank you for taking that opportunity to contract with this company. Thank you.
Marvelous.
Please do a vote.
Thank you.
We have monthly reports in front of us now. Monthly Personnel Recommendations, tab B in your agenda. The recommendation is that the Board of Trustees approve personnel recommendations as submitted. Do I hear a motion? And is there support? All in favor?
Aye.
Are any opposed? We are approved. Thank you. The Facilities Report.
I did want to...
Excuse me. Stand by, Mr. Johnson. We have a comment from a trustee.
Well, I just, again, I wanted to just say, I see Dr. Hearn's name here, ending employment. I just want to say, I think she did a good job, and I'm hearing from the community, had interactions with her, and they were always saying very positively about her. My next thing, I don't know this person, but they're ending employment, and that's Harold Coleman, Operations Specialist, Workforce Development, 20 years of experience. So, I want to give a shout-out to that person for being here and working with Workforce Development, because that's very difficult at times. And another person from, his name is William Everin. Everin, Research Associate Survey Manager with 25 years of experience. Want to give him a shout-out too. Thank you.
Thank you. P. Johnson, please.
Good evening, Board. Couple, really, three projects I'm going to go through real quick. ML, the GL edition, and then the Service Road repaving project. So, ML, of course, the Board knows that we had our grand opening. It has been fully booked since the 9th, and really kudos to Michelle Mueller and Patrick Downey and that whole team for taking a building that we gave them the keys to on the morning of the 9th, but not a lot of time before that, and have done amazing work with that. So, that's been great. As you noted from my report, there were a number of what I call punch list items, any big, big job. This was a seven-month project. We had to get all this stuff squinched in. Todd Krueger and his team, as you saw, along with the entire Facilities Team, CB Smith and team did a great job. But with that, there were a lot of issues at the end that were just, we ran out of time. And the team did a wonderful job of getting the building to where it could present well, it could function well, but we're still going through some punch list items. caulking items, the fabric on the movable doors was delayed for two straight months. We got it in, but Stenco, our General Counsel, is doing a great job. They're working second and third shift around all our events. They're working weekends to finish up their punch list items. So, they're doing a nice, a nice job. But once again, kudos to the Facilities Team, who just did an outstanding job, not just CCB, but the operations team, who had to bring that building back to life from an operational point of view in about two days' time. And they just did a wonderful job with that. So, that's...
What kind of recognition in the community has the renovation of the Morris Lawrence Building received? Is there any media coverage or any outside-of-the-college recognition of the work that we've done?
Yes, there has been. Lori.
Go right to the source, Lori. Thank you.
My pleasure. So, we had some, actually Fran, I can't talk about media coverage without Fran LaFort in the room, and she's our Media Relations Director, and she is in the back of the room as well this evening. But we've had a lot of really nice coverage from a variety of outlets, print primarily, digital, and folks are excited about it. We will continue to work with Michelle and her team to promote the availability of the Morris Lawrence Building for conference scheduling, so that we continue to be booked forever.
Good to hear.
Yes, absolutely.
Good. Question, trustee DeBarty? Lori? I just want to say at it, no, not a question. Well, in that regard, I had a meeting yesterday, I can't keep track, yesterday or the day before, with somebody at the Community Foundation, and there she was enthusiastic about the new outdoor space, because they're planning an event here in September and looking forward to hopefully making use of the outdoor space as well as the indoor space. And I just wanted to say that as a, they haven't even used it yet, but they're enthusiastic about that new space and what we've done.
Thank you.
All right. Okay.
Question. Trustee McKnight, what?
Okay, under the deferred maintenance projects in progress, the first one, ML Retention Bond Dredging.
That was done.
The actual dredging is done. We're waiting, the restoration around the pond border is not exactly where we would like it to be, so we've kept this an open project, because this fall, we want to go back and do another round of restoration to get all the wildflower plant life to where it was. And so, that's why this is still open.
Okay.
Thank you, Fran, because I had a conversation about that. That doesn't look right, so thank you.
And then number four, the LA Wayfinding. You said the project closeout. What does that mean?
So, we, after we had all our new signs put up, we found that we needed to do some, another round of adjustments with the signage to make sure it worked well and change the narrative. We had some spelling errors. We actually had one sign fall off the wall that we needed to get fixed. So, just minor things that, that was, the number of signs on that project was well over 500 signs throughout the LA building. So, it's just, we've left, we've left that on there, because it's not done until we say it's done. So, we wanted to make sure it's perfect for that.
One more thing. I know that there were three projects that are completed. Were they under budget? Because I didn't notice that if any of those projects were under budget.
They are.
One of them was, it says complete, campus-wide elevator upgrades. It says complete, but it didn't say it was under budget.
It's right on budget.
It's right on budget.
Right on budget.
Okay. And the other one was the GL lighting fixture replacement. This is complete, was that under or just right on?
Right on budget.
So, okay. All right, well, that's good. If it's right on budget, that sounds good to me. Thank you very much.
Two other projects, real quick, the Great Lakes Edition. When we first started this, this project, of course, UA is funding a significant portion of that addition. We asked them, when is, when's the last possible date that you could take the building and still make it work for you for training, knowing that we didn't award the contract till November of last year? They said, "We need it by August 1st." We backed up the schedule to early July, and it looks like we're going to come in towards the end of July. At the very end, we ran into some supply chain issues, of all things, with electrical panels. And that's something that's common throughout the nation, and they were on back order twice. We come up with a creative temporary solution to give them most of their power, all of their power needs, but not all of their future growth needs. So, we're working on that, and we're working around the clock. We have meetings every day, on Saturday as well. Saturday night, all things were right on track for the end of this weekend, and then the entire electrical crew got COVID on Monday. So, they are going to be back on Thursday, but that needs to say slides us just a couple more days. But it's all, it's working well, and we will have the building ready for them, as they hope. And then last but not least, the Service Road. The Board had approved an increase. We submitted our revised plans to the Road Commission. They have just got us back our permits on that. So, we have all the under-road surface done now, and it'll be paved next Tuesday, is the plan, weather permitting. So, that's the end of your report.
Any questions? President Blanca.
Did you?
No.
I just want to thank you again, Bill. I mean, none of these projects, I mean, I know we have great employees. We do have great employees. But your leadership, your commitment, 24/7, even while you're trying to retire, has been really amazing. Thank you. Thank you so much.
I do have a question about the flooring replacement phase two. That is, where is, which building is that? Number eight? Because the project is underway. Is there an end date on that?
That's our, that's our smaller of our two flooring projects. So, we have now put in our deferred maintenance, annual deferred maintenance, to allocate money for classrooms and offices, about $50,000 a year. So, we're just finishing up a number of classrooms in the LA building. We actually prioritize every classroom on campus for conditions, the wear in the carpet, the paint, the paint conditions at all, and then we allocate money to go through. We just don't do carpet. We give the entire classroom a refresh. So, we're just finishing those up. The bigger project, which the Board has before as a motion, is a two-part project, which is number 16, the LA flooring project. We were actually asking the Board for $750,000, which includes this 320 from fiscal '22 funding, and then the... funding, and then the balance of it for fiscal '23 funding of deferred maintenance. And that's to do the first and third floor of LA and all, all the stairwells. And to get that work done, all the noisy work does, you work over the holiday break between winter and, between fall and winter semester. And then we will go in second and third shift and put down the new floor in January through February of, of next year.
I just have one more. And I don't want to keep you. The parking structure maintenance, what exactly is going on there, and will it be ready for fall?
It, it will. And to trustee Davis's question, are we on budget or, or this is one that's going to come in under budget. So we actually hire, as part of this, we hire an outside firm to do a critical assessment, in this case, of the parking structure. We just got their report back, and to our pleasure that they came back with less items than what we thought might, might, might be there. So we're, we're in the process of finalizing that list of projects, but that'll be done prior to the fall semester.
Any other questions? Thank you.
Thank you.
Great report. At this point in the meeting, we're looking for further remarks from the Board of Trustees. Does anybody have anything they wish to say this evening?
I'll go. I usually don't go first.
Is that a yes?
Yes, sir.
Trustee Davis, please. See.
I had the opportunity to speak at the adult transition ceremony last week. Gosh, I can't think of, my days are mixed up. Thursday, thank you. I, I love the adult transition ceremony. It's, there's just something about the students that walk the stage and does not at all take away from our other students, you know, in the graduating ceremony, I mean, with all the trials and tribulations and life, you know, any student of any kind, when they reach that finish line, I mean, it is a celebratory moment. But this young lady in particular, after the ceremony was completed, I did shake her hand when she crossed the stage in Atalzy Auditorium. And I made my way out into the lobby, you know, to hopefully, you know, strike a conversation with the other students and their family members and such. And this one particular lady, she was staring at me. So naturally, I gravitated to her. And she had, she had like teary eyes, you know, of happiness. And I don't know if Rose was going to say anything about what she said in her speech, but if not, I piggybacked off of Rose when she said, "Life doesn't begin until after, you know, your comfort zone," something like that, I can't remember. So I said my spiel about that. And when I saw her in the lobby, we got to talking, and I told her again that life doesn't begin until after you, you know, stepped outside your comfort zone. And, and she says, "You know, I have five kids, and I had to do this." And she was fighting back tears. I said, "Well, then I tell you what, then don't give up. Just keep pushing." And that's the same for all the other students that cross that stage. They all had their own individual life circumstances, if I could just lump them all into one thing, that prevented them from completing their, their high school years and just made it happen as an adult. And if anything, I was, I told her, I said, "You know what? I'm going to shake your hand in two years." She said, "I am," because, like I said, I've got five kids and they're watching. It was great. Yeah.
Any other trustee comments? Trustee Darty?
I was taken by the speaker, the public speaking speaker that we had, raising the issues about the emergency response plan and the emotional turmoil that staff members were presented with by having sheriffs respond in the way they did. And I know, Rose, you texted the trustees that there was a bomb threat. But my concern is having in place some sort of a plan or working together. The sheriff shouldn't be just charging in like that and scaring everybody. And I'm not sure how we put that in place and what kind of emergency response plan we have in terms of communication with the Sheriff's Department and their entry onto the campus and our being able to facilitate communication ahead to staff people and students who are on campus to, so that they don't, aren't all of a sudden faced with what they think is their life is under threat when it may not...
Me, I respond, I usually don't respond, but if you don't mind, I would like to...
No, that's fine. But, and I, I don't need a response tonight, but it's something that I think needs a response.
I think it's important. When there's a bomb threat, the last thing you want to do is send out a rave message. What people don't realize is that everyone's going to run out like panic-stricken. If you think that was bad, can you imagine, there's a bomb threat, everyone evacuate the building, even if you say evacuate the building? Things that we have been trained in, and we have been trained, that you do not do that. You send personal messages. You do it one building at a time, one section at a time, based on where the threat is, and then you go to the next. Because what happens then? They all run out to their cars. What's going to happen then? They get into their cars? Where are their cars going to go? Where, where is everyone going to go? Then it goes into the traffic. So yes, we have been trained, and we handled it the way we are trained. And that is the way you handle a situation like that. However, I do understand how I would feel if I didn't know what I know, because I've been trained, that if, you know, if it, first time it happened to me, somebody comes in, says, "Get out of the building," I'd, I'd feel upset, too. But I just want to assure you, and I, you know, I accept the criticism, and I understand, and I respect it. I just want to assure the Board and everyone in this room that we have been trained, and we, we did, we fulfilled our training. If you think about all the things that happen, if you just push one button and everybody goes running. So there is, you know, there is protocol, and so I usually, and I'd be happy to share any response plan with you or anyone, but, and I wouldn't have said this, but I think it's important for people to know that we, we've been trained.
Well, in light of what happened and the criticism, it would be, I think, appropriate to reexamine the protocols and to maybe adjust the response. Maybe not, but it would be, I think, time to take a look. And I'm not sure what the communication is with the sheriffs coming, running in with, all armed with big guns and everything.
So we not only have the sheriffs responding, but we had police departments responding. There were a lot of police on this campus in response to a bomb threat. So I don't know, maybe the person that ran into that building, maybe, you know, you never know. I don't know what he looked like or she looked like and how they were acting. I, you never know, you know what I mean? But Linda, did you want to say anything?
Yes, there's anything to say. The coffee... We are, we are...
Thank you, thank you. Yeah, that's what I'd like to, I want to hear.
And also, we are having a mandatory training for all employees when we get back on safety so that everyone, we review, we did this three or four years ago, but every employee is going to be trained so that they, we all understand the protocol. And at that time, you're right, they don't understand, which I respect, why they weren't, why it wasn't broadcasted.
Trustee McKnight-Morton?
But we are going to do what you said.
My question to you, Dr. Blanca, is we have no control over the police agencies of how they maneuver their response to a threat, do we?
No.
We can't tell them, "Don't you go in there with guns and all that other stuff."
Right, you're absolutely right.
Yeah. So, I mean, I, it's frightening, and I understand that, but having worked in, in the Sheriff's Department, you know, you see this stuff, and you kind of get it used to it, but if you have no control, and that call comes in, who knows if it was for real or not? And nobody knew if it was for real or not. Right?
Any further comments?
I will follow up on that.
President Blanca, you're next.
Okay.
President's remarks, it says. Do you have remarks to see?
Yeah, I do have remarks.
Please.
First of all, the grand opening of ML was wonderful, and I'd like to thank everyone who attended, especially the Board members that were able to attend. Chair Milliken, Vice Chair Davis, trustee Fleming, and trustee Diana McKnight-Morton, thank you so much. I'd like to also thank Vanessa and Lori Muton and Fran LaFort for all the work that they did in organizing the grand opening. So thank you so much, and all the staff that worked on it. Speaking of trustees, I'd like to recognize Diana McKnight-Morton. As you know, Diana has served for a number of years in many roles at SEMCOG on behalf of the College. SEMCOG is the Southeast Michigan Council of Governments, and it does incredibly important work in providing planning and improving quality of life across Southeast Michigan. Trustee McKnight-Morton has consistently represented WCC and promoted the needs of education at SEMCOG, including as a member of the General Assembly and Vice Chair of Education Block. In June, she was re-elected by her peers as delegate to the Regional Review Committee, which reviews projects funded by the Transportation Alternatives Program and other special projects. And she also oversees the Toman Fellowship Program. She was also elected as the delegate to the Transportation Coordinating Council. Thank you, Diana, for your service.
You're welcome.
And we were very honored to host Lieutenant Governor Gilchrist...
Garland Gil...
Garland Gilchrist, Junior the Second.
No, just Junior.
It's just, just the second?
Yes.
Forget the junior? Oh, my gosh, this is like...
I'm a junior.
Delete all that, delete. Anyway, it was, it's quite, first of all, it's an honor to be, have been selected to have that announcement made at this college. And I, I really think, you know, it's because of the good PR, but also the good work that we're doing. I mean, when you think of, you know, the Student Services area, and you think about the number of Reconnect students that have gone through that program, and it's not easy. These applications are very involved, and everything changes constantly. So I'd really like to thank Linda and your group, all the Student Services staff for what you have done to make this program so successful. Thank you so much. And also would like to thank the marketing team for marketing the Reconnect program, and that, that helps with our enrollment. We have 2,000 students right now enrolled in the Reconnect program and 2,600 in the pipeline. So, thank you. Do you want to say anything, Linda? Surfaces. You did a great job.
There was a very good critical mass there that, that afternoon, too. Good attendance.
Thank you. And we have a park, our annual Parkridge Center Summer Learning Experience Ceremony is on August 12th. I'm looking at you, Vice President Tucker. This year, 43 summer campers are enjoying six weeks of a fun and intensive learning experience. This is the best part, you know, it's the learning while they're enjoying it. Trustees are welcome. We'll send you a reminder if you'd like to come to that, that ceremony.
What's the date again?
August 12th. It's a Friday.
Is there a time?
11:00 AM. And, yes, I'm glad you mentioned the adult transitions. Another thank you to Bonnie Truyn and to Linda's area for doing a great job. And if I may, Brandon, Vice President Tucker, would you like to just mention a few things about the ironworkers on campus?
We're excited to invite that, nearly 600 participants. First time back since 2019. Very, very pleased to be here. Definitely goes to John Said, the facilities team. We receive a bunch of plate each day, and that is good. It's too cold. For the first time here in history, it's, you know, it's two and a half degrees in the world, but it's, it's been great. They're having a great time, and they're really enjoying the patio, which you guys are free after this, so you'll play court hold until 8:00. And then there's a vendor night tomorrow, which is always a big show for five people. They're excited.
Oh, they are so cool.
And they are working to extend our contract.
Yes, please, go ahead.
They made an announcement publicly on Sunday at the kickoff, and they were publicly extended two years. Private conversations that are twisted from destination in our... So it was 2023, so we appreciate it.
Thank you. Thank you for doing a great job, and appreciate it.
Do the ironworkers and art fair collide with each other in our town?
Well, you know what? One of the reasons they like coming at that, during that week, is because of the art fair.
Interesting.
Good.
So.
So the wires can go shopping.
That's right. The wires have something to do, you're right. But those are my comments. Thank you.
Thank you.
Oh, wait, and don't forget, there is an, I know, you call me that night if you, if you don't know what to do, but you don't have a board meeting this week next month. If you're lonely or... I'll just be a little...
If we get lonely, we can call in?
Yeah, call me, I'll meet with you.
Truly noted. Thank you. Now, speaking of LA building flooring, under old business, we have an action item. It's TAB D Delta in your packet. The recommendation is that the Board of Trustees approve a construction contract with flooring technologies in the amount not to exceed $750,000. Do I hear a motion?
Shall we? Or?
Support. Is there any discussion, questions? Vanessa, please call the role.
Chair Milliken?
Yes.
Vice Chair Davis?
Yes.
Trustee Darty?
Darty, yes.
Trustee Fleming?
Yes.
Trustee Landau?
Yes.
Trustee McKnight-Morton?
Yes.
Recommendation is passed. Thank you. Next, we have in TAB E, Microsoft Campus Agreement Renewal, another action item. The recommendation is that the Board of Trustees approve a contract with CDW for the purchase of a three-year Microsoft Campus Agreement in an amount not to exceed $203,610. In addition, the College is authorized to renew for an additional three-year period at the revised annual cost, provided that pricing is established through the REMC. Do I hear a motion?
Support.
Got a motion, and I've got support. Is there any discussion? Questions?
I do have a question.
Trustee Davis.
Please, thank you. A new student is enrolled fresh. They have a brand-new laptop, but it doesn't have, like, the word "package," the Microsoft package. Does the College provide any type of discount efforts for that student to get that...
any type of discount efforts for that student to get that packaging downloaded onto their computer?
Mr. Kruger, is that a question you could?
Do they access it through the website? I mean, Blackboard or banner or the college website?
So the college doesn't offer a discount. However, Microsoft has different programs with a .edu email address, so you can log into .edu. And I don't remember exactly what the current protocol is, but you can usually get good stuff for a very cheap price with a .edu email address.
Okay. All right. Thank you. Vanessa?
Thank you. Any further questions, discussion? Vanessa, please call the roll.
Chair Milliken?
Yes.
Vice Chair Davis?
Yes.
Treasurer DeBarty?
Yes.
Trustee Fleming?
Yes.
Trustee Landau?
Yes.
Trustee McKnight-Morton?
Yes.
Okay, the recommendation is approved. Thank you. TAB F, ratification of the Washington Community College Education Association Collective Bargaining Agreement. It's TAB F. It's an action item. The recommendation is that the Board of Trustees ratify the proposed three-year contract effective August 23, 2022, continuing through August 22, 2025, between the Washington Community College Education Association, a chapter of the Michigan Education Association, and affiliated with the National Education Association, and the Washington Community College Board of Trustees. Do I hear a motion?
No move. Support.
Motion, and I have support. Is there any discussion? Questions? Vanessa, please call the roll.
Chair Milliken?
Yes.
Vice Chair Davis?
Yes.
Treasurer DeBarty?
DeBarty, yes.
Trustee Fleming?
Yes.
Trustee Landau?
Yes.
Trustee McKnight-Morton?
Yes.
And with that resounding affirmation, do I hear a motion to adjourn the monthly meeting?
So, I would hear.
What?
TAB B.
Are you going to vote no? I believe I've got a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Trustee McKnight-Morton, question on your mind? If not, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
The meeting is adjourned.